All right, it's four thirty six, if we can go ahead and get this meeting to order, please. A roll call, sis?
Here.
Mary Schinkler, Mike, Furla?
Yeah.
Amy?
Where?
Brayden. He's, Mary said he had called and said he will try to be here, so let's see if he shows up. Mary?
Here.
Uh, Rawl? Trevor Martin? All right. And then we have our candidates. Who are running for city council and for school board, and they are, you guys want to go ahead and introduce yourselves again, please?
For the one, I'm running for position seven, city council.
Yeah, I don't think we have any school board here today, but um, I'm Vicky Falstow and I'm running for city council as well, um, district three. Nice to see some of y'all and meet others today.
Laura Galvan, I'm here with Ms. George.
All right, so. Did everyone read the minutes? From last meeting of July sixth? Are the minutes okay as they are, or is there some changes that need to be put in there? Furla makes motion to approve?
A second.
Sis seconds it, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Passes as they are? All right, so moving on to our active agenda, the first one we're supposed to do is talk about um, the dog park that us sis brought up, um, sis you want to tell us a little bit about what you found out?
Nothing, I went to the city council city hall and first I emailed Trevor and then I was worried that Trevor might not be able to email me back because he would use my city email and I was having trouble getting into my city email. So I personally walked to the city hall and um, asked not only for the IT man, but also for uh, Trevor. And neither one of them were available, so two days later I went back and I did get Trevor and and he promised me. He promised me he would be here. And. Yeah. I haven't talked to him. He said he was gonna do his homework, what was necessary for a dog park and so. It's not gonna want to get my parent email that I mailed him back, cause I'm really disappointed, I, I mean, I made, I made an effort, I showed him what we wanted to do and he said that he was familiar with it and that he would be here, so I'm very disappointed.
Maybe I can buzz him off.
Give him a minute?
I can buzz him.
I can throw tomatoes, I'm really.
Just to go over a little bit about what she's talking about, um, spoke about making the T and, is it no, no? Not, not T and not part, that is over by the PD into a dog park. And um, we were told that Trevor was very also interested in it and that's why she contacted him.
But he actually worked for the Humane Society and I wasn't, I wasn't set on a, a place necessarily. But I looked at the list of things that we were supposed to be addressing and that was one that came up and since we have a dog problem, if you go through the newspaper and you look at the things that come up, how many times the police have to run and take care of an animal issue? We could, all those dogs that are running wild, if they had a park to go to, maybe we wouldn't have so many dogs running around with their leashes still on them, escaping their homes, uh, and so that was, that was my hope.
I got a question, is there any other spots that could work as a dog?
Well, that's what I was looking to Trevor for and you know, I do think that there are other spots, I mean, if you just look around, uh, there's other properties that the city owns that are not quite that big, we don't need that big, but you know.
Behind the old state patrol office?
That's where we were looking, yeah. Oh, no, I didn't, no.
There's a, about a three of them, or we just said it as a mountain.
Yeah.
I think they were trying, I think the city was trying to uh, get them sold.
No, the only park that's over that way is Doodle, but you also have a small park on Lincoln. Uh, down towards Les Swab on the, on the. And then you also have another small one over by Havel, by the ice.
Danny Blaine.
That Danny Blaine, I don't know all the names, go.
I've not seen any one of that one, but I have seen one, one, I've actually always thought they're playing about some.
And it has been mentioned to me in the past that city council is um, looking into the dog situation of maybe having our own animal control person. And then that way, cause we used to have one years ago, in fact, I even got a very beautiful dog from a years ago.
We have an animal control person, the humane, from the Humane Society.
Yeah.
But, yeah, but not a private one.
Yeah, no, cause the, the, my understanding, cause the Humane Society, the contract is asking more.
Oh.
And doing less. And not here as often, and that's why we have, you know.
So I would just like to table the dog park thing.
That's fine, and he says he apologizes, he got up on three reports that he has to get done. So, but he says it's on his radar and he will get information.
I'm gonna give him my list of things to do.
Okay.
So maybe we can invite him again for next month.
We can't, do you want to put that on here?
I will do that personally.
Okay.
All right. So, moving on, um, they want, we also talked about uh, parks and recreation and the open space plan. And the open space plan is a very large hundred and what, four hundred?
Hundred and something, yeah, yep.
And um, I read it, it's been a while since I read it, but it's highlighted, I don't know, did anybody else read it?
Yeah, I read it, that's why I got my dog park idea.
In this, I make sure to.
What is it you guys are looking to do with this open space plan that, the survey that Glenn did a couple of years back?
Well, I mean, I think we said to look at people through the whole thing and see what, what we can do, of what the survey reads, the graphic reads. Uh, naturally can't do them all in one day, but gradually look into it, work into it. There's things that we may not be able to do, there's things we may be able to do. So. But I do know on here it shows that this city got a grant or two hundred and ten thousand dollars for the pool. So there's things in there that to kind of, I think they've done some things so far, but it'd be kind of nice to see, knowing your report back of out of that two hundred and some thousand, what's, what have they done so far? And then I know there's some things that Shane wants to try to take care of before winter sets, that's the bath houses, he's really kept on trying to get these ready to go, it's working out waiting, and May to open and don't have anything, we have bad bath houses. But he's looking at doing some things there, but maybe we can get a report of, this is what we've done so far, out of this, which might.
Right, okay, and there's a chapter on capital improvements and for our park, right? And we've been doing that.
Yeah, you, well, Gwen, when she was doing that, she got this part done.
Right.
So the next one, we're hoping, um, and if you guys would like approved, to work on Upland. Or, I mean, I don't know what other park we'd like to start with, but Upland was the next one that they had on their radar to um, update their equipment. Um, on Grandview Avenue?
The one that has the gazebo?
The one that has the gazebo.
That he said desperately come down because it's a safety hazard?
Did the city put that up, or was it, I thought it was one for bus, the kids that stop there? Or did, was it a privately gazebo, or did the city actually put that gazebo up?
I don't know the history on that gazebo.
I don't either, I've, I know there's some time. I know at one time that, and it probably still is, but there's, that's a big stop area for the school bus, they have kids? And man, that thing was used, and I, I could have sworn a neighbor put it up for the kids, cause during the wintertime they're standing out there in the snow and or, so, but I could be wrong, but I mean, if it's a hazard, it needs, it does need to come down.
I went and I looked at it because it was brought up to me and along with other, with other parks. And it is a disaster, it is not safe, it's got nails sticking out, it's got boards sort of warped and unpeened in it. It's just, it's a real eye sore and a safety hazard. So I don't know if it belongs to the city, or like you said, maybe somebody else put it up there as a neighborhood project, or that it needs it.
Yeah, or maybe we can even talk to, I don't know, the school, see if maybe they want to take it on as a project on the wood shop?
They don't do those things anymore.
No?
Now they have a new teacher and he used to build those sheds and stuff.
Curtis?
Well, Curtis is the new teacher, but the teacher prior, they built new sheds and stuff. And then people have been asking Curtis, are you guys gonna be doing sheds? But you might ask if he's interested in doing that, I mean, he might say yes, but I know big, you know, shed projects, I know he's not doing that.
Yeah, no, well, it wouldn't be a shed, it would probably to, just to replace whatever needs to be.
He might be interested in doing that.
So who can we get to ask the school teacher if they would like to take that on as a project, I mean, cause to me that would be a good thing for the kids, especially the seniors, we need their hours.
I can, I know Curtis, I can, I can get some hold of him.
Mike, so you'll ask, you'll talk to him?
Yeah.
I have that in a minute, so you know.
All right. And, okay, um. So is this probably a good place to put this parks in, um, with the David, Daybreak Rotary? Would probably be a good time for this one, like, cause it has to do with the, the parks and back and the open space plan and things that we need.
We need for letters, maybe, uh, yeah, yeah, the items from the committee members.
Yeah, so I took, um.
Do you want to finish off C, or you just want to merge it in there?
Let's go ahead and just merge it in there because uh, Mary and I were invited to Daybreak Rotary to go present our ideas because we were told that uh, they had some money and they're looking to do a project to help the kids, the community, and so we took it in, I, I took it, Mary and I, it was out of town and um, really good group of people and um, they are looking for something to do, so I took them three options, I went like this, it's only three though. Okay, the first one, it was concession stands at the public pool. The second was benches within the community. And a third one was a splash pad at Central Park, because it was brought up that uh, the kiddie, the kiddie pool for the toddlers and stuff used to be free, why was it moved inside? That one did something I haven't needed to go, so anyway. Talking to him about this, they're not really interested from what I got from them and the questions that I got from them, stuff about the concession stand at the public pool. However, they are interested in putting benches in the parks for people to sit, so that way when parents or grandparents take their kids to the park, they have a place to sit. Because I don't know about any of you, but if I sit on the floor, I need to have a plan on how I'm, heck, I'm getting up. You know, you know, because suddenly you got grandkids, I mean, nowadays, you know, we got grandparents taking care of the grandkids. And you're gonna get them out there and get them with the activities, we bring them here for T-ball, we're gonna bring them here for soccer and stuff. And if they don't bring their own chairs, they don't have a place to sit.
Okay, so you're talking the community center, not the, not park, not Central Park?
All the, all parks, all.
Because I'm, I hang around the Central Park all the time and there's plenty of, like in the little kids area, there's events and there's tables all over the place and they move them all around.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't see that such an issue, but I can see it here as a community center.
At the community center, at all the, the smaller parks and stuff like that, there's no place for them to sit, and we want the community to utilize all the parks, not just one or two.
And what about those six that are down on Edison Street?
What's that?
Just gonna bring it up, have you ever driven by Edison, Edison and Sixth Street? We have, there's six tables down there on that other corner.
They bought those tables strictly for the corners, that's strictly for downtown.
Yeah.
That's what the city manager had said, it was tables.
Okay, I'm just gonna say, I've driven by there, cause that's my neighborhood and
Yeah.
one time and all the times I've traveled by there, I have seen somebody sit at those tables.
I think they might.
Kind of embarrassing because there's so many of them.
Well, I think they might be utilized more when we do, if there's events, I think it'll get full, but I mean, they try to leave them there for everyday use, but then again, who's downtown? So, but it's a good, I mean, it, it makes everything look good, I mean, it's, it's nice that they have that department. So, I mean, you get one or two people, then.
Yeah, cause we're always trying to make downtown more attractive, more reason to go down there.
Well, what about having it in the gravel park where the park, with the uh, the county or the county?
District.
The port owns that.
Port commission, yeah.
Yeah.
Like a port.
They can't take those tables movement that.
Yeah, there's a part being out. So.
Yeah.
Seems like a.
We don't always all work together.
Really?
I'm like that, playing all the same game, yeah.
Be nice.
And you have to rent it and get insurance.
So, yeah, okay, so the things are interested in benches, so I, then my thing is please encourage them to be out here at the cause we don't need any more downtown.
No, um, they've asked for all the benches, all the parks, I'm sorry, all the parks' names and addresses. And Rob Lehman, Chief Rob, was there, and so he helped out, he said he would definitely get them that information for the addresses and they were gonna go check out each park and see how it looked. And that's why he gave me the idea, that's how I ended up at Upland. So I want to go check it out, so that way if they come back to me or something, I know what it is they're talking about. And yeah, because I also explained to him about the bench that the Lions put down here, um, uh, Railroad Park. It was just that little ship.
That little strip, yeah.
And we put a dedicated uh, bench there for Carol Stones. And it's made of recycled material, material. And it's graffiti free. And like I told him, I said, don't get me wrong, it has been graffiti. It has been graffiti, but when we went to go do the presentation, we had the newspaper and everybody there and the TV and stuff. It was graffiti and we're going like, oh no, I mean, cause it'd only been there like two, maybe three weeks, right? And my friend, she had gloves on, she goes, oh man, she goes like this, and she goes, look, it comes off! So it comes off, it doesn't stay. And so they're going like, oh, and I said, and I think that was, I think we had to pay like twelve hundred bucks or something like that for it. I said, so, you know, benches made of recyclable material stuff would work really good because we still have the LVL down in here big time and they like to let people know that they're still here. So, that's what I think, and with the Q and A that they asked about after everything, they were more inter- interested in the parks and the benches.
We appreciate whatever they do.
Yes, definitely. All right, so um, C is discussion of signage at the pool building by the park.
So Mike had brought up that there was no signage at the pool um, for the hours, so that was taken care of and it's up already.
Looks good, thank you.
You know, I was there the week that I had cash here and um, so uh, I was at the skate park and these three young boys came by, it was Saturday morning. And they were waiting and waiting and waiting and I said, boys, I don't think the park is open, I could not find that sign, where was it? It had the hours on it.
Well, the, it's, it's, it's on the building, but the hours for the park is right, although for the kids, a quick little kids' is, there's a sign, the hours, states right there, dusk to dawn, whatever.
For the pool?
For the park itself.
Right.
But for the pool, it's on the building.
It's on the building.
They put it up in a frame, it's very visible.
Really? I have to go by there and look, yeah, cause those poor boys and I, we could not find it anywhere, we talked around that building.
It's by the men's restroom, we, oh, I know, mechanical room, right above that.
Okay, okay, those poor boys, they were so. But the part that the pool isn't open, so.
Shouldn't have told them, okay, I'll take responsibility, just go ahead and play.
But we got it up, that's good, thank you, yeah.
All right, so that's what we had discussed at our, at our last meeting. And do we have more items that we want to bring up, you know, Mike usually has things you want to bring up?
The only thing I, I have a question is Mary's been putting on all these events, different things, the question is that, so, all the revenues that you bring in, does that go into a parking wreck uh, fund, or is it just all sucked into the city?
It goes into a general fund.
Just so the, the general?
Yeah.
We probably don't want to go to the parking wreck, cause it probably costs more money to do those events than it does to.
And all the events I've been putting on, I've been trying, I get sponsors.
Oh.
So, it's not, I'm not really bringing in revenue for my events.
Any of these events, is it? I, I know it takes time, like, I think we discussed before, we, the T-ball, you know, I mean, we don't know if we're getting one person or ten people.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but do you see any of the events now that you've done and look back like maybe this wasn't such a, a big, big event, or it took more money? You know, you got, you get sponsors, but then you have to maybe pay for some things.
I do have to pay for things, um, but honestly, I haven't paid, I don't feel like I've paid a whole lot on all the events that I've put on.
And you feel to all the events, and I know some events are first time.
Yep.
We really can't say.
All of them have, knock on wood, all of them have been uh, good, so, yeah.
The sponsors are happy?
The sponsors are happy, um, you know, all the events I've put on so far, I haven't, I haven't had anybody.
So tell me about that camp, a camp, camp was wonderful, oh my gosh, that was such a blessing to me.
The camp, that one, I'm kind of looking at.
A lot of people that were participating in it.
A lot, well, there was, a lot of them were going to summer school, I noticed after summer school, we did get a high jump in the first, um, but again.
It's such a wonderful thing, oh my god.
Just go to.
I know. Okay.
Yeah, and every week I put up, you know, next week, this is what we're doing, following week, this is what we're doing, so every week it's on there.
And for those of you, are you familiar with the camp? The camp, yeah, you can come for fifty dollars for the week.
I saw that, yeah.
Oh my gosh, I mean, you have, find a daycare for fifty dollars.
I mean, yeah, well, kind of like fifty dollars.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm like, okay, well.
But then, you know.
I don't know.
Play it to them or fix up and think, that's only ten dollars a day for childcare for the, the child.
They're probably getting it free from families, so.
Not necessarily.
Did we have any scholarships that provide for people?
For here, yes, we did, and it was on the flyer.
How many did we have so far?
Um, applied, it all goes to finance. So Bobby would have those, I think for sure, I know like seven families did apply.
Cause like I said before, last year I had it, we had, we were taking care of our grandson. And he liked it here so well that he convinced his cousin from Richland to come and stay a week with Grandma and Papa, to come to day camp with him. So, yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I reached out to like a few friends that have the, the therapy dogs for the schools, so they've made, um, they'd be time to come, bring the therapy dog, I know she'll come again one, for next week, which is the last week. Um, I had the police department come and talk to them about safety, had the fire department come out. Uh, they'll be here on Friday, the last day to do, um, to wet them. Um, you know, I have the library, the librarian, uh, once a week come, she reads to them. So I added more than what was last year, um, so, yeah.
I think.
It was fabulous.
Yeah.
How many kids did you get registered this time around?
Um.
Or is it?
It just depends because some were registered and then they wouldn't, they wouldn't come, cause they were sick, but it was like thirty to thirty-five.
And next week is your last week.
Next week is my last week.
Let's go, so it's what, the twenty-fourth?
I think this week we have forty.
It's twenty-third, twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
The twenty-third for school, yes, it's the twenty-third, I'll start, so, yeah.
Maximum with kids?
Well, um, well, I have ten teachers, so I know for sure ten per teacher is the nuts.
It's great, it's a great program.
Oh, and then my mom's got that, save this for Emma.
And then we have them separate, so we have mini camp and then we have the older kids and the, the baby them. Yeah.
Okay, what about soccer coming up?
We got soccer coming up, um, that's already open, I've had lots of emails coming in, now it's just hoping for volunteer coaches, so I have three.
Three so far?
So far.
So did, do the coaches volunteer at the last minute, is that?
For T-ball, I did not have that issue.
Okay.
And they all.
I was wondering.
Yeah, so soccer will just depend, um, if we have coaches or not to, for all these kids.
Yeah, cause I try to pass it, you know, pass the word out, uh, especially to my friends who have seniors, high school seniors.
Mm-hmm.
Or ones that have just graduated, you know, and say, hey, if you're not going off to college really quick, you know, they could really use your help, if you volunteer some time and stuff. And I know uh, Mrs. Lehman, she, she puts that stuff out there too, so.
Yeah, I think once, um, once it's schools up and running, I'll probably send an email out to the school, or maybe I'll just go and hand deliver flyers. Cause they'll have until, they have until September fifth to sign up, so.
So are we gonna provide any porta potties out there?
I can and not, yes. Mm-hmm, I'll have a little something.
Yeah, so I'm trying to think, man, these little kids, they're gonna need.
No, I already, yeah. Um, debating if I want to split them like half here and half over there, but I don't know, I kind of want to keep them all in one, just cause I know.
I think it would be better.
It would, I just, I got bigger out the space over there and.
I was gonna say, cause it would depend on how many kids you get, right?
That's what I'm kind of waiting to see to decide my final, because I know I don't, I know parents don't like to split.
Yeah.
If they, and so I'm trying not to, but again, it's all gonna depend on.
At the Grandview.
How many?
They had it set up, and my little girl was, at that young age, they had the, the younger kids and then over here was the, you know, medium and older kids, so, but it was good, cause you know, you have a parent going from here to there, back and forth and instead of having to drive.
Right. Oh, I know, I, yeah, I have four kids, I know, I know, I know the struggle. I know the struggle, so I try and put myself in that situation, you know, when I'm doing all these things.
Yeah.
I'm like, would I like that? Probably not, you know, so I try and use that as, when I'm doing.
And you, you're using the parks, where in the past, it used to be, before COVID and all this good stuff, and before parks away, parks went away, uh, they worked with the schools, so we used the schools. And like you said with that, the church and Nazarene and Mary said, you know, do you like this? We had three kids at the time playing sports and, oh yeah, me and my husband, we rotated fifteen minutes here, move around. We meet, we'd say so and so's doing what, 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 you know, and we just did the whole great big loop, but you know, if you have, you don't have the space, cause you have too many kids, you know, that's what you have to do.
Have to do, yeah. But, so it'll just, you know, as we get closer, it'll. So it'll just, you know, as we get closer, it'll be the final decision on.
And I pray it will all grow as time goes by and you'll have more and more, you'll need more space and. Yay, it's all good. Alright, so what else do we need to discuss or what do we want to discuss?
We always have the museum. Museum uh has been being opened the fourth Sunday of the month since uh last August. And um, believe it or not, we have somebody every fourth Sunday of the month, not a lot of people, but we have them. But we're trying to work for consistency, so that because people's comments were the museums never open. So we have, I, I volunteered to do that for the entire last year. Um our last fourth Sunday of the month is um August twenty-seven. Um I expect my whole uh team, all five of us. Will be there except for me, I'm having my fifty-fifth year class reunion, so. The word on the street is that we're, we're disbanding the museum historical association. Uh that's the rumor, but the minutes only show that we have said that our last day of being open will be. Uh on the twenty-seventh. Because it's a very big turmoil, I mean, we that are left surviving uh to support the museum. Uh have a very big emotional attachment to what's there. So uh if you hear that rumor, please make sure you understand that it's not been. Completely, the historical association has not given up completely. Now, there is a meeting, I was seventeen. And I have no crystal ball that says what's gonna happen there. But um the city is ready to take it over, the problem is that that's not how our articles of procedure work. Our articles of procedures say that we are supposed to give the museum. Assets to a mutual or another organization, another. Uh volunteer organization that has similar interests, so it would be like, th- those things would go to Grandview or, you know, someplace else. Uh the word on the street is the city is considering a commission for the museum. Well, the museum's already part of this commission. And I don't know about you guys, but I haven't been at this for a long time, but commissions don't work. I mean, I, my husband's run on the art commission and. I don't know when their last meeting was, we could see, could not get enough people there to vote and have a forum and have a leader. And this is really a valuable asset of the, of the cities. Uh and to think that you, that, so I personally, as a not representing Park and Recreation, but. A person on the historical commission, I called every one of our council members and asked for five minutes. And said, please, if this comes up for a vote, because I'm not gonna be there for the next couple city council meetings. Please, please, please do not vote for a commission. No, I personally, and this is off the record, but the, the, the museum has money. And, yeah, okay. They need to hire a um, a curator. To go through the things that are at the museum and decide what is valuable and not valuable. Uh we usually meet at, I'm gonna say four thirty. So that's kinda where we're at, uh and uh.
So it basically sounds like if, what you're just saying, it would, that would be it for the museum for Sunday.
That it could come up for a vote at that meeting. Now, it takes a lot to go through it, because we are Bible one C or whatever that is, and there's a whole bunch of steps we have to go through. And we have to follow our, follow our articles.
And the reason why it got to this point is because there's nobody.
I'm seventy-three, one's eighty-three, another one seventy-three, one seventy-two, and. We have a basement full of stuff that came down from our attic, because we have a real problem. And we have many of the stuff, so. It's been hard to work in the environment, I encourage you to come there, though, it's kind of a fun place on the twenty-seventh, we'll be glad to figure out. And uh we've, we've got it still decent on the main floor and um so.
So there's meetings open to the public?
Yeah, yeah, and actually, if you go to the city website, you can call my number and I will give you a tour anytime you want.
Oh, great, when's the meeting?
So that's why you're forward on the mission.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
How did the national night go?
The one here is tomorrow, but the other one at Central, I mean, it was good, it was a good turnout, and then I don't know about Valley Hills. I didn't make it that one.
I heard Valley Hills was very good, and I heard Central is fantastic.
Heard the fireworks last night.
The fireworks. Oh my gosh, it's in my neighborhood.
Not much, but all of a sudden it really kept.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, no, Central had a good time, the pool was full of sessions, so.
Well, we paid eight thousand for ours, I wonder how much City paid for theirs. It was pretty substantial, it was, it was beautiful.
So, yeah, um yeah, so a national night out here will be tomorrow.
Is there anything that we can do that we should be here for?
We're trying to enjoy the show, um oh. Pickleball did announce that they have a professional pickleball player coming. The night of National Night Out. And so she called me. The more the merrier, I mean, I must warn you, you're, we're all gonna probably be fighting for parking spots, but.
That's not when they're doing their clinic, though.
Yes, they're doing their clinic.
Yeah, so that'll be exciting, um.
I was, I was kinda disappointed with doing it on the same time.
I know.
I know, cause pickleball is really fun.
Yeah, she called me on Tuesday and I'm like, you know, National Night Out.
I let her know National Night Out was that day and I told her parking is gonna be hard, just so you know, but she was like, we'll work with it, okay.
And I told her, there are gonna be banners on the tennis court and she's like, great, we're gonna have shade and I'm like, yes. We both went.
So they're gonna be outside then, they're not gonna be here inside the gym?
No, they won't be in the gym, they'll be outside.
Who the famous pickleball player is.
Mitch Ziegler's niece.
Oh, but she's like represented by, she's been on paper and the news. Yeah, so that's gonna happen at the same time and you guys can come and enjoy the collected.
Volunteer handout hot dogs.
Over here at three.
Nope, LaFamiya's gonna be cooking.
They're gonna cook it for us, um I think we have like maybe one volunteer who's gonna help hand out the hot dog. And then um.
Ms. Sunny Sideport will be here, and I told them if they wanted to help with that, they can or just like help with that, whatever.
And then. The police department donated uh school supplies, um a few. Backpacks and footballs. So the backpacks, uh we're gonna hand to the army to be handed. Nikki Congress, Nikki Forrest will be there. She also asked how she could volunteer, I said, just, just come and say hello.
Anything from the candidates that are here?
Would you guys like?
Well, we'll be here tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, we have a booth, so we'll be here, we'll be just talking to people and, you know, saying hello, introducing ourselves and really just getting to know. Folks around the community, um so yeah, we'll have a booth there tomorrow, we'll be here early, so if y'all need our help with anything, feel free to approach us. We're super approachable in front of us. Um so yeah.
Go ahead, just count on us.
Oh my god.
Yeah, that's the first.
It was, it's all George, I gotta, I wanna tell you that. So it, it, the idea was thrown and I said, I don't think I could do that, it's too late, um. And George pulled me aside and he goes, you know, I got X and R, Count C D L in, and then Sylvia um. Matched and next thing you know, I had a UFC, uh United Family Center. We, we got this, you have to make this happen. And I was overwhelmed, cause that's not, uh it wasn't expected, it just happened so fast. I thought the, I thought the army was gonna be our highlight. Yeah, so we're, we're all excited, I'm, I'm happy, that's awesome.
As our community came together.
Yeah, and everything was sponsored, um it's also with uh. The food, I think Erica was able to get a thousand hot dogs. Um from the P D and then the other thousand were donated by Washington D, so. Yeah.
Cool.
Well, nice job.
Together, we're, we're very, we're very blessed, yes. It was not, it was definitely a, a team effort. And Raoul saved the day, he went and got us two pellets of water.
We'll need your truck tomorrow.
Yeah, well, we'll probably bring him around noon, cause that, I mean.
Yeah, but we'll still need to borrow you and your.
Can you do another trick for us?
I'm just trying to. Do we have a uh meeting time, or I mean, next meeting?
Labor Day weekend, no.
So the next Thursday, the first Thursday is the seventh, um but I know. I know it's rented by the city, I'm not sure if that's what they're doing. I don't know what Jack's doing, but I know she rented it for the whole day. The seventh. The jam, oh, I mean, we can be in here if you guys still wanna be in here, or if you guys wanna move it to the fourteenth.
But which one was the conference room at City Hall? Why, I mean, I think somebody said that we, it may have, while back, something about Shane's office is too small, but they have a conference room at City Hall.
Uh well, if it.
Yeah, cause I think.
It's pretty small, cause we have our LTAC and it doesn't.
Eight chairs? I, I wanna say.
Well, one, Shane wanted to move it to City Hall on a regular basis, so it'd be easier for I T. But we decided we wanted to stay here at the community center because we are parking wreck.
Yeah, but I mean, if we could utilize there's conference room, it's at, it's office, but the conference is big enough. I mean, if we could just host it there instead of having to.
I mean, we, we could still have it here, I just don't know what they're doing and how much traffic, I mean, parking wise and, cause it's an all-day rental.
We should just try it once at City Hall. That's you, I mean, this.
On the seventh at City Hall, at City Hall, is that a thing to go?
Uh we, this is at four thirty? I think it's okay, I'm, I don't think it would be reserved for anything else at four thirty, just checking, making sure.
My city's here.
Yeah, I don't know what the event here is for.
September Thursday, September seventh at City Hall at four thirty.
Hello.
This is another candidate.
I'll, I'll sit with Jackie and Lisa.
And you will verify that near yours?
Yeah, I'll send an email to verify that.
Amy, what's new? You've been so quiet.
Before you text me, since I don't have my email. You still don't have your email?
That was gonna be my next question, d- does everyone have access to the email? No, not, not any.
They can't get it from here or what?
No, since I've been on LTAC, they haven't been able to fix it. And it's when I've been on LTAC for a while.
Those LT guys.
I really just need to create a new one.
So just Amy is the only one that doesn't have access.
I was having a wood mine and then I went to the city hall and I was trying to get the tech guy and he wasn't there and the next time he wasn't there, he was on the phone. So uh, is it Debbie that was, so she gave me a help number and I then I was able to just use that and be able to straighten out my email.
I'll email them, the help desk email, they'll get to, yeah.
Know that whole secret that, that it's tough to get off that.
Oh wow, they change your password every ninety?
Every ninety days.
Yeah, I have a new password, it says, I need password.
She has denture, she has denture.
Well, yeah, because, you know, it doesn't show what you, it doesn't give you the little icon, see what your password is, right? So when you're gonna change it, you have to know what your password was. And then you put in a new password, right? And I jacked it up and, yeah, locked myself out.
Hi guys, my name's Karen Basket, so I'm currently running for city council again, so I'm excited for this. I wanted to be here, I was really busy, but I made my way here, so I say hi.
And Karen will also be there tomorrow. Pool board and council all together once, yeah, okay.
Alright, anything else, ladies and guests? Can we adjourn this, it is five twenty-three P M. And thank you everyone for coming and participating and bringing information and we'll see you next time.